I'd like to call the meeting of the Marshalltown School Board to work. This is the time and the place for the June 3rd Board Meeting. Welcome to all of you who are with us, and welcome to those of you who will be watching us on the late broadcast. Allow me to introduce the people at the table with me. From my right, we have Janelle Carter and Mike Miller. On the left, we have Sean Hytman and Ben Fletcher.
Got them. Perfect.
At the center table with me, to my right, is Paulette Newbold. She's the Board Secretary. To my left is Dr. Therese Shuji, the Senior Superintendent, and I am E. Niblog. For those of you who are here to make a public comment, please sign in on the pink sheet on the Speaker's Table. You will speak directly after the consent agenda and will be given five minutes according to board policy. And according to that same policy, the board members will not be able to respond to your comments, but we do thank you for your comments. Please read with me the mission statement of the Marshalltown School District. We develop learning skills and positive mindset, successfully pursue a meaningful future through personalized learning experiences. And stand as you're ready, hold on to my hand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any additions or changes to the agenda? We do.
I have a few changes to the consent agenda for personnel. Under the resignations header, number four, Virginia's on, change her resignation date to effective May 31st, 2019. And then adding to the list of resignations, please add Lacy Moore, instructional coach at Overland. That's L.A.C.Y. at Overland. And Jennifer Sloan, Sloan is spoken as S.L.O.A.M., fourth grade at Overland. And then under the opponents, I need to add one. First name is Christina, C.R.I.S.T.I.N.A., last name is Said, S.A.I.Z., sixth grade dual language at Lenahan. A and E A five.
So Coach Johannes and Shomo could come forward, please.
I'll try to speak loudly in the center. So I wanted you gentlemen to come forward to be recognized. Well, for one thing, Scott, congratulations on the recent recognition from the board register to be Fall Iowa Soccer Coach. Without question, I know that your words will be, this is a shared honor with Coach Shomo as well as the entire team, because oftentimes a team puts coaches in the position to be considered, but more times than not, it takes a state championship or, you know, runner-up finish or something like that to receive such recognition. So I think it's really even more meaningful that the board register has recognized a significant turnaround from last year to this year, and they probably don't even fully know the circumstances of our former coach resigning kind of in the 12th hour, and then you two gentlemen stepping up big. Scott has oftentimes stepped up when we've been short, you know, in girls' basketball. I know most recently as well as soccer now. And Coach Shomo, having worked with many of you, with others in the community, supporting your development in soccer, and then willingness to take away time from business and home to do what was necessary to, I think, bring you guys to the fullest success potential that you had. I self-professed, I'm not very knowledgeable in soccer. My oldest daughter, when she started playing youth soccer, was really about the time soccer first got sanctioned as a boys' and girls' competitive sport by the Iowa High School Athletic Association, and it took a couple of games to get kicked in the shins for my oldest daughter to say, this isn't for me. And then for some reason, the younger one didn't even attempt it. So, but obviously, in my career as a superintendent anyway, I was in Boone, Iowa, when they were like the last of larger schools to sanction the sport. They kind of held out on it, and so I was on the ground floor of that. And then I moved to Bednorth, which I think most of you guys know has a rich tradition in soccer, and it's different watching high-quality soccer. I mean, it's really, really, really enjoyable. So, and seven years watching both their boys' and girls' programs and learning more and more about it, and then watching you guys was no different. It was just a sincere pleasure, and all of us wanted it to last forever, obviously, to the state championship. But all of you should be really proud about what you accomplished and the third team in our history to get there, and hopefully that'll be emphasis for the guys that are coming back and the new ones coming into the program to continue the tradition that you've established here. So, I want to congratulate both of you guys, and thank you profusely for providing the service to these young men and to our school and community. Thank you.
The few words that I had, he took them. It was a team effort. It was, these guys, you know, I don't have the history that Bobby does with them, but, you know, a few of my coaches were freshman level, and some skipped me and went right to varsity, which, you know, you can see their talent is very there. But, you know, and just kind of all season long, these guys have made it easy. They have made it fun and enjoyable. And as a coach, you know, or as we started from the very beginning, we talked about wanting to push them, and they responded very well. We did something different this year. I'm thinking different, I don't know, but ask them, you know, beginning of the year what their goal was, have them fill out on paper and what they were willing to do to accomplish that goal, both as a team and individually. And, you know, when you get 26 cards back on their goals, it's, we want to go as far as we can in state, and I'll work as hard as I can to get there. I'll do what I can as a team to help us get there. You know, when you've got a mindset like that, with universal trust, you know, it's pretty easy to say, this is what we're going to do. You know, and when we talk about the games we want, we kept coming back to that, these are nice games to win, but this is where we want to be. When we ended Friday night, again, this is where we want to be this season. So we definitely feel like we've got some unfinished business. We've got a number of guys coming back. We talked about, Coach Shomo talked about, you know, challenging the seniors this year to really set that mark high, so that the juniors, the guys to follow, will have something to match it. And so it'll be fun to watch next year to see if they can do that and beat that challenge, and what's going to be there for the seniors. Played there this year, saying, hey, let's go for it this year, so. Thank you very much for everything. Let us come and be a part of it through the week.
I know usually Coach Shomo isn't the sure word, so.
I wasn't sure if you wanted to give him the mic.
I just want to say thank you to the community, to the administration, the way this is really rallied around this for young men. There are tremendously special groups of young men. Have to turn around. Oh, sorry. You're welcome. There are tremendously special group of young men who can play this game of soccer tremendously well, but the strides they took this year to become a team. My team through the entire year was one community, one team. We talked a lot about the general difference between being black and white, Hispanic or Buris. Didn't see color. We saw character, and it just meant so much for the community to get behind these boys. I hope you understand, I think you changed their lives forever, not just for the season. And so for that, I say thank you to the community and to the leadership here in Marshalltown. Thank you very much.
I want the boys on the team to come up and join you so that we could get a hand of the room from our camera.
She laying down.
Before we begin the consent agenda, may I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Miller, Fletcher, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed, say. Motion carries five zero. Moving on to the consent agenda. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes of May 20th? Any other items of note, Mr. Spagatess on personnel? Looking at inter-agency agreements and contracts, we have contracts for Iowa Valley, DB, food service, professional development. There are many there. Do you have questions on any of those? Open enrollment, we have one out for 1920. Are there any items of note in bills? Are you speaking about research or management? And can you release them? Yes, please.
Per our board policy, we have to vet our research requests that come into us, and this one in particular came in and was connected to Matt somewhat. It was a special education request, and so this instructor, this doctoral student has asked to work with our district to learn more about special education practices with some of our teachers. And she's attached her consent form and information, and Matt and I reviewed it and gave approval.
Will you or will Matt be supervising?
The contact with the teachers, that would be Matt.
Any other questions about the research? May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Carter, Miller, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed, say. Motion carries five zero. This is Carter. Now before we start, how many times tonight?
This is my third time.
And how many times will you be speaking tonight?
Uh, just once.
Just once?
This is it.
Okay. I think the meeting that you spoke like three or four times?
Yeah, that was two days ago.
That was.
It's been a little bit. Okay. Hello, my name is Alex Stein. I hope that you remember me from the last couple of meetings. This is my third time coming before you to talk about this topic. However, I'm here again to ask that you maintain permissive language in a contract. In February of 2017, I emailed and tried to speak with both the Newton and Marshalltown legislators to ask them to vote down the bill that would gut collective bargaining. I marched for Iowa's teachers and attended legislative breakfasts shortly after. I have spoken out against this for two years. I am tired. I am exhausted. When will we feel supported, heard, and worth the amount of work we put into our job? When will we feel secure? Please do not remove the permissive language from the contract. Thank you for your time.
Hello. I'm Laura Frinney, and I'm a teacher at Lenahan, and this is my second time on this topic. And last time I talked to you about my concerns about veteran staff leaving town, and Marshalltown has always been known to value education, and that's why we showed in our school board, we showed in our community, how we rallied around our sports teams, and education is important in Marshalltown, and I've always felt that. And I worry because if we lose good teachers, and I told you about one of them leaving my department, this year will be the end of the year. And when you lose those good teachers, we lose the quality of our education program, and I'm really concerned about that. I'm also concerned that with the change in our contract, our current contracts, people are used to. And when I looked at the good faith, like I'm asking you to have good faith. And fair, good faith is implied fair dealing and a general presumption that the parties to a contract will deal with each other honestly, fairly, and in good faith, so as to not destroy the right or the other party or parties to receive the benefits of the contract. I am required to sign a contract. My co-teacher that left the district has to get permission to leave the district before she can accept her other job. You're asking me to sign a contract. I asked you to have good faith in the current contract that we have and continue as we have for many years, and not make the proposed changes. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Philip Carter. This is my second time on this topic. Last month, I sat here and watched the approval of spending on new curriculum and new technology. These expenditures were not small by any means, and yet some seemed to come to a quick agreement that weren't worth, agreement that they weren't worth it, and so approved the cost. It would cost you nothing to keep our contract with the permissive language in it, and it would cost you nothing to agree to a multi-year contract. I do worry that there may be costs by going through the handbook proposal. It could cost you your teachers' trust. It will cost you the quality teachers, and also attracting quality teachers to our schools. Time that could be spent thinking of new ways to improve our classrooms and making learning more meaningful and exciting for all students is instead being spent worrying about our jobs for the next year and questioning if we have to fight to be heard. So in fact, by not going through the permissible language and staying, and staying in our contract, and to back up that with a multi-year contract, the cost is on our students and the best learning environment for them. Please carefully consider these costs. I do want to end with a thank you. The approval to spend on new curriculum and technology is going to be at the benefit of our students. Please keep the students at the center of their future choices.
Hello, I'm Deidre Murphy. I'm a teacher over at Woodbury Elementary. I'm here to talk about the contract. When I came to Marshalltown, I was very impressed with the openness and transparency with which administration and teachers spoke. I come from a background, my first degree is in business administration. I did work in the private and nonprofit sector before becoming a teacher. I've worked in very many, in several very large school districts in very large cities. This is why when I came to Marshalltown, I was exceptionally impressed with the transparency with which things were done. I am very concerned because many of the things, the top things that makes a good working relationship between administration and other people within a place of employment, one of the, one of the top things in the top five is perception. There is a perception that perhaps maybe we are not worthy enough to come and sit down and speak with each other and be transparent. That concerns me very much because I have seen this in the business world. Schools are not, should not be run like a regular business. We are a very different, different type of situation, especially with the type of people that you have. You have professionals here who are dedicated to working for much less money than we could ever gain in the business world, but we're here committed to working for the betterment of our students. We're the type of people that are intelligent enough to sit down and talk with our administration and be thankful that there's transparency both ways, to work for the common goal of bettering not just the quality of education for students, but the betterment of the entire planet, because that is what we're in the business of doing. So I'm here to ask that please, many of us are anxious, a three-year agreement on a contract would probably put this to rest for three years, give us time to better our communication back and forth, as well as leaving all the permissive languages in the contract as other school districts have seen fit to do. I do want to remind that a lot of these ideas that come up may sound good on the surface, but many of them have been sprouted from those who would like to stop public education and go into charter schools and privatizing this type of way that we work with our kids. And I'm going to urge you to please think about that, and let's go back to being the Marshalltown I fell in love with where we can talk to one another and be transparent sincerely. Thank you so much. I really love this district. I think you're doing a lot of great things for our kids, and I look forward to many more years of being very transparent with you and talking with you and making this a much better place for our community. Thank you.
It was interesting for you to tell us how many times you had visited with us, but I was actually teasing Alex when I first asked him how many times, because as he said a couple of meetings ago, he was here with the Lenahan presentation, he was here with a curriculum group, so Alex has been before the board a number of times, so that was
Good evening, my name is Dee Bird. My name is Dee Bird, I'm a curriculum specialist at the Airwood College and Career Readiness. I have worked with the counselors this past year, actually the past two years, on the ICAP plan, and we are presenting it tonight. This is, it's a work in progress. I just want to say that we are continually looking at this and seeing what we have added to our curriculum to enhance our program, so. This is just an overview of House File 2392, and it was required by districts to come up with a district guidance plan, and required for students from K to 12. However, what we did with this last year, we started talking about what can we do pre-K through 12. So our plan is a little unique compared to other districts. Our district plan has a team of around 16 members, and it's made up of superintendent, curriculum director, principals, counselors, CPDLs, teachers, and the MCC intermediary, Terry Hummerberg. We've had three times this year to go through this and look at the five essential components. The district plan made a decision last year to use a virtual job shadow as our software tool for student use, and that's used in eighth grade through 12th grade. And then at the end of this school year, the district is required to report up percentages of students who complete each essential component. And like I mentioned earlier, our plan includes pre-K through 12. The first essential component is self-understanding, and in the program there, I did link in the guidance plan, I'm just going to highlight a few things. It's weather lengthy, it's like 35 pages long, you don't want me to listen to all that. So I'm going to highlight some key things. Starting out in pre-K, they do creative career connection unit, and that's where we start talking about careers. In K through 4, we have JA units that are being taught, and that is a great way for our community members to get part of their careers spoken of to the students about how they make decisions to be in a career. In fifth and sixth grade, we had the junior achievement program as well as the BizTown program. And in seventh grade, we added defined STEM this year. I think they've been here to present to you about that program, and that has been an excellent way for our students to start exploring into different careers. And the JA global marketplace blended model. So, as you can see, we are very dedicated to making sure our students develop the self-understanding about careers. And eighth grade, then they get the JA financial part. In eighth grade, they also do the virtual job shadow, that's when they start doing their assessments of themselves to figure out which career cluster they would be really interested in. And one thing we added this year was on the infinite campus, there is going to be a highlighted area next to their name as towards which career cluster the student is interested in, so that when they transfer to the high school, the high school teachers can look at that and understand where the student's interest levels are. So as they work with them in homeroom or in their curriculum, they can actually start beginning having those conversations with individuals about them. In ninth and through 12th grade, there will be a new curriculum next year called ICAN, and it will be taught by all homeroom teachers to help begin that self-understanding. There will be different curriculum lessons through ninth through 12. We also continue to update the virtual job shadow activities, and there are many activities for them to do, so. Right on the next one. Essential component number two is career information. As I mentioned earlier, pre-K, they're doing the creative career connections, and K through 4, they're doing the JA's where careers are highlighted. They're all show focusing on STEM. And fifth and sixth grade, as a result of the, or fifth grade, as a result of the externship last year, teachers got together and developed a curriculum where the students researched careers they were interested in, and then gave presentations. And I actually went over to observe the students, and they were very excited about their findings and whether or not they were continually interested in that career is kind of up to them, how much they research it, and come up with a plan. In seventh and eighth grade, again, as I mentioned earlier, they'll be identifying their career cluster. In the high school level, we have lots of activities. Students go on career college visits, they're asked to do job shadows, and we are also starting the work-based learning website, and also the opportunity for students next year to explore different careers through their work-based learning. Essential component number three, career exploration activities. An interesting thing we do in third and fourth grade, it's called the Virginia Career View, and it's kind of like virtual job shadow, but a much simpler format, and the counselors next year are going to do a little assessment after the student goes through that and kind of discover how it helps them think about their next move in a career. And because... And because we are wanting to collect more data as to how our activities are actually making an impact on their decisions and their selection of courses and what they do throughout the high school. Fifth and sixth grade, again, their career exploration is BizTown and junior achievement and classroom presentations. Seventh and eighth grade, they're going to do the global marketplace, as I mentioned. They also have a program called Lunch and Learn. And that's where the counselors invite in different, are different professionals of careers. And they talk about in a very informal manner with the students about their career. And students are going to be asked to do a Google form afterwards and say, what are their thoughts after hearing about this career? In ninth grade, they're going to also do the freshman financial literacy fair. Lunch and learns in the high school as well, optional work-based learning events. And I think the thing that's most exciting is that we also have some days that students can attend. It's called Advanced Manufacturing Day. And it's right here locally where they do statewide training for masonry. And it's very, really, really interesting. I went to it and there were students from all over different districts along with our students. And Terry Hummerberg organizes those. There's also an Intro to Healthcare Careers Day, Pathway to Healthcare, sorry, I said that one. Masonary Day, Social Services Career Day, and Law Enforcement Academy. So these are all events for students to go and do a job shadow. Sometimes in the healthcare, they cannot do the job shadow with, where there's actual patients because of HIPAA rules. So these experiences are allowing our students to actually job shadow, but in a more simulated type event. Essential component four, post-secondary exploration. Fifth and sixth grade, we're doing college visits, BizTown, Trio. And seventh and eighth grade, they are also continuing to do college visits. One of the things we are looking at is how we can involve our parents in this visit more in the future. Because parents need to be part of this conversation. So that is something that we are taking a look at. And in ninth through 12th grade, as I mentioned earlier, they're going to be doing the curriculum exploring post-secondary opportunities and the industry certification. In 11th and 12th grade, they can actually be, earn certifications. And we will be housing information about what certification students earn in our Infinite Campus. So that, as you know, the, we had, our seniors received the first Bobcat Ready certificate last week. And this is information that is collected in Infinite Campus to help our counselors determine which students are Bobcat Ready. And all of this work is really very much work that helps us show how we, our students are gaining the skills to make, you know, good decisions about what's best for them in the next move after high school. At this point, I just want you to know that the counselors are working really hard on a curriculum map. And this is a pre-K through 12. It's going to be one document that includes everything at every age level and in every subject level, how they are paying attention to college and career readiness and that career exploration. And we just have a few more inputs to make on that. And that will be completed and that will be a working document for all teachers, or all teachers, but as well as counselors to know where are we meeting the gaps and where are we helping students move forward with Bobcat Ready. So, do you have any questions? Oh, one more. I'm sorry, one more. The fifth thing is a career post-secondary decision. I guess I kind of mentioned about that, how we're working with everyone. And the high school, they have to continue to look at their individual career and academic plan. And we have a college decision day, but we're adding to that is a career and military day. So it's all students, even if they're attending two-year college, if they're attending the military, they will be recognized for what their decision is. Additional information, I did mention about the, I kind of got ahead of myself there, the college career curriculum map. Next year, we purchased ICAN curriculum. It's ninth through 12, and that will be delivered by homeroom teachers. And the key here is it's not just the counselors having these conversations with students, but every teacher, every adult in the classroom is having these conversations with students. We are hoping to do different types of data collection at all levels to determine how this curriculum is impacting students. And the district team has decided to meet quarterly next year so that we can look at the dashboards, we can look at all the data that is being collected and make decisions in how we move forward.
So at the ninth, 12th, we got this current level at home, we must have always had other activities and events, activities. As who goes to those things? Is it open? Everyone? Is it set by the plan? Are they provided by the counselors?
Yes, it's open for all students. Everything in this is, is for all students.
Yeah, I want to commend Dee and the entire counseling team for putting together what I think is probably one of the most comprehensive college and career readiness plans in the state. A lot of districts focus exclusively on the high school and/or middle school, but very few create a plan that includes elementary, intermediate. Not only that, but our teachers and our staff implementing the plan is huge because there's a lot of plans written that just suffice to meet, you know, the state requirements or whatever, but maybe they're not implemented with fidelity or whatever. But that's one thing with our district is that when these plans get created, they get implemented with fidelity. And I think with this, it really shows a lot of the experiences that we created, like teacher externships as a result of this. Some really exciting things happening. It levels up and then just the middle school and high school, and it's been really exciting to see. So I truly do believe, you know, if not sooner, within a year or two, we'll probably be sharing the statewide work. Because I know the state's already coming.
And like I said, the teachers that attend the externship, you know, they go back into their individual buildings and are talking about, you know, how this will help them in their curriculum. And we just continue to have the conversations. I think that's the key, is keeping it on the forefront of everyone's mind is helping our everyday conversations with students involve talking about careers.
I want to add, while Dee was working to facilitate this, she was also very involved in the selection of our guidance curriculum, Positive Action. Because we wanted to make sure we had a curriculum that also worked on those soft skills, those employability skills that many of our kids struggle with just because they haven't had those interactions opportunities. So she's done a nice job making sure that two things are walking in partnership instead of conflicting with each other.
I just want to say, great job, because it's been really nice to see you all just come together. The attention that we're getting from the state public is really, it's a good thing. It's those.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Stanfield, would you provide some clarity to the clarity?
Do my best. Good evening. Well, I'm here to, yeah, provide some clarity for the clarity. Clarity survey was administered this spring. I'm going to look a little bit about what that clarity survey kind of is about. It is in a partnership through our AEA. It's available to all districts and the state. They have a partnership with Wright-White Company that puts us together. And it's a really excellent tool to just kind of help gauge and look at efforts being made in a lot of districts in Iowa right now with, you know, conversion into more digital platforms and digital curriculum and one-to-one initiatives and things like that. It really lets people kind of, you know, see how things are going, set goals and make plans. So it's been taken now for five years. We've actually got some decent data behind that. It goes to students in grades three through 12, and we also ask all certified staff members to take that. This year, we received responses from 317 staff and 2,568 students. So it's a pretty good, you know, representation of our population there. And it's built into what they call the case framework, and we'll break that apart. The case stands for Classroom Access Skills Environment. And so you can look at each one of those areas to see how things are going and measure the impact of technology on our. So just the overall, you know, view of the entire survey itself, we get a, we get a case score. And this year, we're again proficient. We went up since our last data collection. There's a lot that goes into that score, and I really can't tell you exactly, you know, what answers make what for points, but it's always good to see that increase. And going through those areas, this is the first year that we have been proficient or better in all four of those domains. So classroom, which I'll talk more about, is kind of at the end result of those other things. And we've typically been down, down a level there. So the classroom gets into the four Cs, which you may kind of hear about when talking about instructional technology, critical thinking, communication, collaboration, and creativity. It gets into digital citizenship, assessments, and assistive tech. Access focuses a lot on devices and whether or not people can take them home. Their access levels at school and at home. Do they have Wi-Fi? What do they have there? Do they share them with others in their family, those types of questions? Skills looks at foundational skills, general technology use, how that people can do things online, how they can work with multimedia, movies, photos, music, that type of stuff. And then the environment works on the use of the three P's, policies, procedures, and practices. Looks at professional learning, our tech support, and our beliefs about technology and education. So here's some trends we can see by domain. Our first year, we implemented this. We were just rolling things out. We weren't one-to-one across the entire district yet, and we weren't even that way at the high school. So our lower scores were there at the beginning, but it was understandable. And then we kind of went up and stayed rather consistent for a few years. And this year, you see two areas really took a nice climb. Our access improved and our classroom level improved. So we went from advanced to exemplary in access, and we went from emerging to proficient in the classroom area. So you'll see these colors all throughout these different slides. A little key at the bottom there, if you're wondering what the colors mean. And each one of these breaks into the case overall score and then those four domains. And then I wanted to show how Marshalltown sits compared to Iowa. And then also just everybody that takes this survey. Because I think it's interesting to see how we're sitting, but it's kind of, you know, adds a little, it adds a little bit more to see where we're sitting compared to others. So in our overall score, taking everything into consideration, we have a score this year that went up pretty good from last. And we compare it to the state and to everybody who takes the survey, we are above them. You can see that we went from, we jumped pretty good in our classroom area, getting into that proficient range. Our access level went up. And our skills and environment levels went down, but only by three or one point. So even though this was a lower, it's just kind of hanging around that same area where it was before. We were exemplary in our access, as I mentioned. This gets into our beliefs, our, our access we have at school and at home. Like I said, we increased in our teachers' access at school. That was great to see, and also our students' access at home. Both those areas went up into the exemplary fields. And we're sitting above the state and everybody who takes the survey here for this area. Now, we're proficient in our environment. So I need to stop sitting like this and go back to that case framework. I believe it starts all with access. We can't do anything unless we have the access we need to do it with. So that's why I'd like to speak at that point first. After access, then you have to have the environment that supports the use. So that's where we're at here. Then we'll get into the skills. So when you're, we have a support to use it, what can we do? And then all that together should improve that end result of the classroom that we want to see. So even though we see the case, we're there to act in with this, I'd like to kind of switch that order around to kind of see how we triple down those areas to the classroom we want it to be. The environment, we went down slightly by one point. We're still proficient. We did increase in the area of support. And professional learning has kind of been a struggle continuously through this. It's just a tough thing to squeeze in. There's a lot of various topics around instructional technology to include. But we were, we're hanging up there with the state. We're very similar in that score and not too far behind the rest of the people who take the survey. Our skills level, again, above the state and others who take the survey. Just went down slightly from last year. You could possibly tie that to, you know, professional learning is a part that people feel like they're not getting enough of. That could impact skills. But, you know, we're increasing some of those on the student side. You'll see the student online skills went up. And our teacher multimedia skills went up. So the things we're doing with technology might be, you know, a little bit more different and increasing some skill levels in those, those areas. Then our classroom score, it's excellent to see this area become into that proficient range. Our teacher use of the four Cs has gone up. Our student use of the four Cs has gone up. All those areas have. And compared to Iowa, Iowa's still hanging back in that emerging area. So we finally crossed that threshold and we're above where everybody who takes the surveys as well. So very comparable. Any questions? It's a lot crammed in there real fast.
So it's kind of good data done. There's, there's, there's good stuff there. What does it point you to? What do I need to do better, differ, or next?
I think we always need to look at how we can improve this classroom score. That's what we want to all be at the end. And so we keep looking at those areas that build to that. And so, you know, we have some spots there in, especially like our, our environment and skills areas that we, you know, can hopefully work on improving, getting most of them up. And I think as we move into our digital learning plan and looking at what we have in place with that and getting some specifics down, we'll continue to see these, these scores go up. But as far as, you know, as time has gone on, our access has really increased. Those skills have, you know, gotten better. It's just, we wanted to get this down with the classroom at the end.
Is there some specifics you can share? Or is that going to be in your next presentation that's going to run?
Uh, specifics around?
Well, you said we want to improve our classroom score, but you didn't give any specifics on exactly how are you going to do that?
Sure, yeah. You know, there's a lot of questions that come into the survey. I mean, you can really dig into this data and get down to the specific levels and look at different schools and how different, you know, how the different questions are being answered. And, you know, we look at, if you look at the breakdown there, all those subareas of the classroom are all proficient except for the teacher use of the four Cs. But that has gone up quite a bit since we first began as well. So I think, you know, when we look at these different areas, digital citizenship, how we use technology for assessments, provide assistive technology. The, the questions around the four Cs are tough to gauge because they're very specific. Something like, how often does your teacher give you feedback online? And that, that, just because of that one question, that's gauging how well you collaborate. So, you know, it's kind of, you have to take it forward a little bit to know that there's a lot of things we could be doing that the survey doesn't necessarily ask for a response for. So it is tough to, you know, we don't want to just focus on an effort to make people answer one question a different way. But overall, I think we can look at all those things together. And I know that we have, we're making some good progress in those areas like digital citizenship and our assessments to hopefully keep this, this climbing up. But we could drill down into that further to look at, you know, those question-by-question analysis too.
Other questions? Well, let's right on into the digital learning plan. If jobs are, please someone's like controlling data.
I think they're not having any coffee fits during the digital learning plan. Okay, so in front of you.
We'll make it easy for you. This is a 25-page document, so you don't have to go through.
Oh, okay. Thanks for clearing that up. So this is the first time you've seen this plan, the digital learning plan, but it's not the first time that others have seen. not the first time that others have seen it in the district. And so for the last, the timeline, it looked like four months. Yeah, it's been like three or four months. We've been working on this as a team. We meet as an instructional technology team every other week. And last fall, the state of Iowa released their Iowa digital learning plan and we knew we needed to get something like that in place here in Marshalltown because anytime you spend the kind of money that we're spending on technology and software and enhancements and infrastructure, you want to have some way to measure it and keep yourself focused. So we use what the state created as our template and so that's the five big areas you'll see in the Marshalltown digital learning plan. But we personalized it to make it kind of reflect our BOPCAT work that we're doing, our BOPCAT-ready work. And then within each section, like we said, it's 25 pages, but within each of the five sections, we just really gave you a glimpse at what our current reality is and then what are our goals and recommendations. And based on other feedback we've had from the board, if you go back up to page two there, at the very bottom of page two, sorry, it says appendix outcome metrics. So for people who don't want to read the whole 524 or five-page report, this will be kind of the guiding parameter that we measure ourselves on every year to see how we're doing from one year to the next, if we're meeting our goals and getting closer to what we want in our future reality. So my section was section one and I'm not going to talk too much, but I just wanted to let you know it was kind of a leadership section, the introduction to the plan. And some of the highlights, in case you haven't had time to read the whole thing yourself, is that overall, we're trying to really focus on increasing accessibility for students and staff, promoting equity while doing so. So we want everyone to have equal access to all the opportunities that digital learning brings with it. And our current reality, I went through, so if you go back into the main document... Are you operating this, Matt?
I'm the technical...
Okay, thanks, Matt.
Technical support, so we can...
It's fine. In the current reality, we thought this leadership section, we should really highlight who our users are and being realistic about who's using technology in Marshalltown schools and how are they using it. And so as you'll see there, we went through, you guys got in the plan. School board and our district leadership, including building leadership, our teacher leadership staff, our teachers, classroom teachers, and then our students, of course, our end users, the ones who are always pushing us to learn and grow and explore bigger and better ways. In this section for leadership, our future goals and our recommendations are pretty short and sweet. We want to continue to establish more strategic connections, so that includes having more developed partnerships with higher education institutions, community college. The EA has digital literacy connections as well as the state department of education. So really making sure they know who we are, what we need, how they can help us, and vice versa. We need to find ways to fund our plans that we have. We have to think about sustainability, whether that's through grants or other partnerships that may be out there. And let's see, what else? Really knowing that we have to kind of do, I said embed technology into learning initiatives, but it kind of goes back to what Dave said when my guest in that question is, there's just, there's no amount of, there's no end to the learning that digital access brings us. So how do we make that manageable for teachers? Because we know teachers want to know more and they want to know how to do things better and more efficiently, but we only have that number of hours and minutes to give them information or provide learning for them. So we're trying to be responsive to the teachers that are asking for more professional development, while at the same time, you know, archiving and kind of coming with a system way of looking at how, what are some minimal skills and competencies that we want all staff to have when it comes to digital learning so that they can better support our students. And then section two is teaching and section three is teaching and learning. So I'm going to go ahead and pass the plan off to the next person.
Okay, so I worked specifically on teaching and learning, those two sections. And so I'll just give you a quick overview of what was in that plan. Current reality, we have teaching beyond classroom walls. So, you know, there's no such thing as we can only work within our classroom because with all the technology we have, we can talk to other classes, you know, in other continents or, and send emails and messages and see what other people are doing. We are personalizing and differentiating our instruction in our classroom due to the technology. We enhance and support our learning goals with our technology as well as using things like learning management systems, which you approved a few weeks ago, for example, like Canvas or Google Classroom, if you've heard those. And then, of course, we model the tech use during our PD presentations, our full-day PD days. And so our future goals and recommendations related to teaching are to, again, provide ongoing technology PD for all teachers. We're looking to increase the number of teachers who are Google-certified educators. And Google has, through their program, has different quizzes and there's an extensive test that teachers can take and they get a little badge and a certificate saying you know some things. And it's pretty rigorous, so it's a good thing for our teachers. Also, the district, you know, as a plan, will provide all PD with technology purchases, which is obvious, but again, still part of our plan. We want to increase personalized learning opportunities for students so that they can learn at their own pace through blended learning. Our learning management system, Canvas, will help us with this. And then we need to provide teachers, provide tools to teachers to self-evaluate their own technology use. So it's okay to have it, but you need to make sure that it's meeting the learning goals in the classroom, not, not just that it's an add-on and, you know, because it looks great. It has a real learning purpose. So then, in terms of our, the section three for learning, our current reality, all students in grades seven through 12 are going through digital citizenship. So that's how to be positive online, you know, bully-free, all those kinds of things. Those are things that kids are working through every year. In grades as early as pre-K, kids are working on coding skills, which we know is a wave of the future, so to speak. It's kind of analogous to when we learned basic way back in the eighties when I was going through school. All students, grades K to four and grade eight are receiving coding instruction with Project Lead the Way right now. But Lenihan, as we know, was awarded the Computer Sciences Elementary Grant, so we'll have more computer science at Lenihan next year. And then, of course, computer science electives are offered at grades nine through 12 currently. So again, future goals and recommendation, we have this great defined STEM program at Miller, so we're looking for them to create at least two project-based learning projects in two content areas next year. And then to increase the use of virtual field trips and high-quality virtual labs, that's another thing we're looking for for the future. We want to increase keyboard instruction in third grade because without being, with the hot tech, that's going to take forever, so we need to teach them the right way to type. Connect computer science and coding skills to content areas, we also need to do that. And then finally, we need to make technology accessible for all kids, grades K through 12, which is also where we're headed. So with that, I will pass this off to assessment.
As we, you know, expand our technology and digital tools, we have a couple types of assessments that we give students. And one can be those formative, day-to-day type assessments we do just to gauge where we're at with learning. And we now have the capacity to put those into a more digital format to make them just quicker to administer and also quicker to get feedback on. But we also have other assessments that are given to us, such as our FAST assessments for screening and living in progress, monitoring, our state assessment, which went digital this year. And so some of those things, we don't have as much choice over and we use, you know, technology to handle those. So we're taking a variety of different types of assessments, either through curriculum like S T Math and Lexia, or FAST, A-reading, A-Math, to have those assessments. And then teachers are creating their own assessments to give students also. What we want to do for the future is just continue to use those assessments, but also help prepare students for those assessments and make better use of those assessments we have available. So one thing we want to make sure we don't have happen is that we don't want a student's level of digital literacy to impact how well they would inform or perform on an assessment. So any opportunities we can give students to practice taking digital assessments and use types of tools or the types of questions they have on those, we want them to become comfortable with that. So when a high stakes assessment comes forward from the Iowa assessment there, we're prepared and we're ready to go and, you know, it's not so unfamiliar for us. So we're going to keep expanding the use of ones that we have going on and we're seeing that now coming up into ninth grade level, we're going to start administering some FAST assessments next year. And the implementation of the Canvas learning management system, as we said, will have some other assessment options there, or as there are in third course now. So we'll keep just drawing with our use of those.
All right, so the final section here was on infrastructure, which I was responsible. And as you can see, kind of on the graphic there, the technology infrastructure is kind of the tool or the center that allows for all of this other work in these other content areas to happen. So a few of the goals that were established for the infrastructure were ubiquitous connectivity. No longer is it just enough to provide students access with internet at home, but also taking a look at what students have at home as well as school to ensure they have access to those high-quality digital learning content. Also having access to a powerful learning device. And with those powerful learning devices, make sure there's the responsible use policies and procedures that are appropriate for handling those devices. We also with the infrastructure need to take a look at protections for student data privacy and security, as well as making sure the network is up to handling the additional load with all these additional devices being added. So we took a look a little bit at our current reality as far as infrastructure with our internet speed being at around five gigs for the entire district, which is at this time plenty adequate. Also hopefully with the recent Chromebook RFP, hopefully by the 1920 school year, all teachers will be at, teachers and students will be at one-to-one ratio for mobile device. We have a replacement plan in place for student devices scheduled to be replaced every three to four years. We also have age-appropriate versions of our responsible use policies. We also have policies in place, whether that's for protections of student data and privacy. We have software packages like our firewall and anti-ware software that support the secure and reliable operations of our infrastructure. We also have disaster recovery plans in case of a large-scale disaster. In summary, just a couple of goals of this plan that I'd like to highlight is investigation of Wi-Fi hotspots for students as well as Wi-Fi hotspots for extracurricular travel on school buses. We need to do a little bit of work on updating sustainable replacement plans for our desktops, projectors, which I spoke a little bit on at the last board meeting, as well as our network equipment, making sure that these technology tools are running like a well-oiled machine and not causing any problems for some of the other work in these other areas that's going on. And that is a couple of the goals that I would like to talk about.
So in summary, this was the five-part digital learning plan and we went ahead and shared this out with a couple, actually more than a couple of different groups. Most recently, we had a community group that came in that was local business leaders and they gave us a lot of input on section five, for sure. And we also had a student that came and gave us some student opinions about our plan, which was nice. We also vetted this with an administrative group and then our teacher leader group, instructional coaches also. So we feel like this is a pretty good, good plan off the, for our first time trying it. And then our goal is to have this be a standing item quarterly at our leadership meetings next year where we can pull up that outcomes appendices and see, if that's in the appendix, and see how we're doing. And I think it'll also give us more of like a clear vision of where we're heading versus, you know, the next brightest thing that comes along wanting to try that and do that. And I know that sometimes that's work we need to consider in technology, but I think this is, builds a really strong foundation for what we're doing and it keeps that investment that we're making really focused and centered on what we're trying to do, which is increase student achievement through digital learning.
Questions with Dave?
Thank you for adding the metrics. I think I was probably the one that brought that up. So back on the section, Lisa, you did, section one, leadership. You listed school board, district leadership, building leadership, TLC, teachers and students. I wonder if there might not be a spot for parents in that section as well? Parents obviously have a big role in the education of our students digitally or otherwise. And having been through this for a while now, I think that the way parents get information digitally about is really disjointed here in the district. I think that you, if you're a parent, you get email information, you get social media information, you go to the school district website for information, you have Google Classroom for information, and you have infant campus for information. There are like, just off thinking about it, not break, there's five different sources. It feels like digitally that could come together in a more cohesive, understandable way. And so that's just a suggestion from one parent who is almost master of those processes.
We'll throw a few more apps I think next year and see how you do. I think that's a great point. And this is, we did collect feedback at all the other form presentations we did too and added. So you're seeing the updated version after those other ones, but we'll add your comments into this one too. So maybe we should bring it back to the next meeting then with any other comments or revisions in it that we have.
So that would be leveraging existing or new technologies to work efficiently and effectively communicate with parents?
Yeah, I'll give you the best example I can think of. I have a doctor's appointment at the Mayo Clinic coming up in June and they have one app for everything, whether it's billing or appointments or surveys or it's one sort of portal for every, my interaction with the Mayo Clinic, you know? And that's kind of a huge organization, just sort of like most parents think that school district is like a huge organization. So I don't know how difficult it would be to get more...
If nothing else, I think it's valid to spell out in here all the ways that we digitally present information and ask parents to receive information from us and we make and support their kids' learnings. I mean, all the different classroom pages that teachers create or apps maybe that they're using to talk about the good things that are happening at school with their child.
Thanks for putting the clarity information embedded in the appropriate places. It makes clarity significant.
I agree.
As opposed to just being a report once a year.
I know that was the first thing. When we started talking about, what would we put in it? And we're like, clarity data, because we've had it, but it doesn't seem to have a home that it lives in. Throw a date report in.
We didn't know why you just documented like the, you know, some of those goals you put on there to, to next year or by year or something there?
We put them all as like baseline and next year goals. I guess we could extend goals for farther than that, but it seems like with...
Well, I'm just curious, I would, I would assume that's, that's unfair, that's fine. So it's totally one to you or what you're hoping to be next year?
As much as things have changed, it's hard to know more than one year out.
Okay, that's, that's pretty good.
Other than like the adoption cycles of devices and things like that, where we know those are extended here.
Many of the things we've been investigating and or researching, you know, all of the years that I've been here, certainly, you know, one example would be we've been talking about trying to figure out how to provide accessibility on, you know, secondary school buses or extracurricular buses. It all comes down to cost-effectiveness and how to do that. It's kind of been a hurdle, a stumbling block. So, you know, some of these will be ongoing goals, I believe, until, you know, technology evolves to where it's, you know, more cost-effective, I guess, to do some of the future vision and goals that we have. What really excites me about this is involving external partners like the businesses that we provide input, especially for the student learning piece, because we absolutely want to make sure that we're doing the right things to position our kids for future college and/or career readiness. And I think involving them on the front end is really important.
So is this better outdated annually? So, is this better outdated annually?
Other questions? Thank you very much. John, Pam, would you come join me, Lisa? Everybody else please come on.
So, about a month or so ago, we presented twice to you about math, the seven, twelve curriculum adoption and books, everything's been ordered and moving right along. Same old, the last, I think at the last board meeting, the morning, meeting before that, we also had handbooks approved and two things happened simultaneously, I suppose, this year. We reviewed as part of the needs assessment process, we had some concerns that were raised about our math course offerings that we were having at Miller and how they were impacting students and how they were impacting high school course enrollment. And so, based on the math committee recommendations, Miller had made some revisions on their handbook, which you had approved, but maybe we hadn't highlighted deeply enough what those changes were. So, a recommendation was made to come back and be a little bit more explicit about what is gonna be happening in math. And so, just have a quick little slideshow here to share with you about that and a couple teachers and Pam to talk to this process if needed. And I'll take most of this, but just kind of a reminder, this is what we shared with you last month, is that beginning a year ago, February, we had put together a team of seven, twelve math teachers under Pam's direction and principals are invited to those meetings, they come when they can, they're half days once a month. And Dr. Jennifer Schilling is from the EEA and she's been a support throughout this process. And there's a link in there to that document we went through too, you don't need to open that up, but this is kind of a background of who the players were in this conversation. And mind you, all of those people, Angela included and John, are, then go back to their buildings and report to the seventh grade team and the, and the math PLC team. So, there were some major conversations that had gone on with the math committee, not just do we like the Pearson materials versus the other? We knew we needed to get updated things because our online subscriptions had expired and they would, would not even offer them to us anymore. We also knew a big push was for our seven, twelve teachers to embed more of the shifts in mathematical practices. So, moving beyond just understanding the algorithms, but really knowing how to communicate about math and explain your thinking as you solve math problems, be resilient. We needed online materials that would work with our Chromebooks and students to go faster or slower as needed. We needed to address what had been created, which is commonly known as middle school acceleration, which typically is a one-year acceleration that's very common in middle schools across the state. But for some reason, Miller had been adopted as a two-year math acceleration, which became really problematic as the, as these years have gone on and we'll talk about that in a minute. So, we used Ed Reports as our guiding resource to look at materials, worked with the EEA, with Dr. Schilling, and again, had all these conversations continuing to flow back and forth through Miller, Emily and the high school via the math team. This is just a repeat of what you have already heard twice, which is the materials that we've selected. Thank you. Okay. And so, the course adjustment that we were talking about is typically freshmen take algebra, but there had been a push to have more eighth graders take algebra and this has happened over the last decade or so. And so, that would be a one-year acceleration. In order to take algebra as an eighth grader then, you would have needed to take pre-algebra as a seventh grader, which would be a compacted version of seventh and eighth grade school math standards. Somewhere along the line, this work had been happening at Lenahan in sixth grade with a few students. And then it became a more broadly advertised offering outside of the XLP world, which is our gifted and talented kids, to any kids from St. Francis or from Lenahan. And the next thing we knew, we had classes of forty, we had forty to fifty kids out of every incoming seventh grade class who was, was being double accelerated, who were skipping seventh grade math and eighth grade math to take algebra as ninth graders and then take geometry, which is, you know, as you mentioned, quite a, quite an accomplishment and quite a challenge at the same time. Along with that came some teacher classroom observations of gaps and the data started to look a little bit interesting, I suppose, at the high school in terms of what was happening with these kids as they got to be sophomores, juniors and seniors. And that's the part where I'm gonna turn over to the teachers to share kind of what their experiences were and or Pam.
Well, some of the gaps in particular that we saw, she talked about gaps, are a lot of work with exponents. It was a gap that we saw for a lot of the kids that had been accelerated and that is a middle school standard and it's one of the standards that was getting skipped when they accelerated early. Other gaps we saw were proportions and square roots, but really exponent was one of the biggest gaps that we just kind of continued to see in those kids.
When we looked at some data that we pulled of course grades, I, I don't have any statistics for you because when we looked at the spreadsheets, I even asked the math experts to look at the spreadsheets and help me figure out how we could put some statistics to what we saw. We, none of us could figure out how to do that because with our, the number of kids moving in and out, it was hard to follow. We could identify the kids that were coming out of grade six and going into Algebra One or coming out of grade seven and going into Algebra One. So, we could identify those kids. It was really hard to track them past graduation, but what we did notice, this is the one thing I think that surprised me greatly, was the number of kids that were one and two, particularly the two-year kids accelerated. So, those kids coming out of sixth grade, out of sixth grade math, going into Algebra One as a seventh grader. Their grades in seventh and eighth grade in those courses looked pretty solid if you looked at the letter grades. But when they got to Algebra Two, which was taught at, for them, then they were ninth graders taking it as their first high school course. To me, it was surprising the number of kids that had extremely low grades, as in D's and F's. And, and that was surprising to me for kids that were, if we were in fact selecting the right group of kids to push through the acceleration, these would be kids who were saying didn't need seventh and eighth grade math. They were so ready for high school course coming out of sixth grade that they were ready for high school math. I was surprised to see that dip in, in grades. Now, that wasn't true of every student, of course, but it was a larger, it was a learning, which is I think kind of where the team got to think with the teachers saying, we know that they're coming in not knowing, having some of these fundamental math skills that are foundational skills in grade seven and eight, that these kids didn't have the opportunity to have. The team really started thinking, it seemed, I'm, this is from my opinion, to create a remedial course for kids who had been two years accelerated to catch them up in high school, did it seem like a good plan? I mean, that, in my opinion, didn't seem like a good plan, so.
So, speaking of plan.
Yes, that's where we are.
What we, what we came up with was not, it, it's a plan and it's a plan that allows kids to still accelerate who are talented in math and, and have aspirations to take more and more math as they go through or, or not. But what it did was take that pressure off trying to figure that out when they're twelve, in sixth grade, when they're coming in from two different schools and they haven't been in the middle school schedule where their grades start counting towards their grade point average, et cetera. And so, what we did, the committee came up with, was this type of graphic or visual, I suppose, of how you could, you could come into Miller as an accelerated student and it still is acceleration, they're having one-year acceleration of seventh graders. You won't be placed in Algebra One, but you'll be placed in seventh honors math. And then that will allow us to reevaluate what we should do at the end of seventh grade for you when you're in eighth grade. There still might be students who end up taking geometry as eighth graders. They might have to go to the high school, we'll have to figure that out with that group of kids, but we'll have a whole lot better picture of who those learners are and what they're capable of doing. So, what we did was we followed, well, I'm gonna let you talk about it, I think she was gonna talk about this part. Or am I in a different slide?
I can go through the plans if you want, or you can, it doesn't matter. So, our, the traditional path is for those students that are generally on grade level, they'll take traditional seventh grade math and eighth grade math. In ninth grade, they take Algebra One and Geometry as a tenth grader. Eleventh graders take the Algebra Two and then they do pre-calc, okay, which that second semester of pre-calc is college credit. So, they, even though traditional path students can take college credit course. The students that are one-year accelerated would take that honors math, honors seventh grade math that compacts the curriculum. It's, it's fast math, they go through seventh and eighth grade standards. And then they would take Algebra One as an eighth grader. They would continue on and end up in calculus. So, they'll end up with both college credit for calculus and for MCC. Or they could take the statistics and study calculus depending on where their interests lie. The other option for acceleration, if they're not so accelerated in middle school, is to take seventh and eighth grade like they normally would and take Algebra Ones of freshmen, but then as a sophomore, they can take both geometry and Algebra Two in a block math class. So, they get both of those classes as a sophomore and take pre-calculus junior and have the opportunity to take calculus senior. I think that's unique in our district, that we have two routes of acceleration, that they can accelerate at the high school level and they can accelerate at the middle school level.
There's another pathway that we didn't, we didn't put up there because we were specific about this particular change at Miller. And the other pathway, which is, is at the high school, is for students who are not on grade level for math. We have, we have a pathway for kids to have Algebra One, the Algebra Two for those kids. So, we're not doing a pre-algebra course. Pre-algebra is essentially a review of seventh and eighth grade math. And so, the, the team two years ago made a switch from that particular route because again, we weren't getting, we weren't seeing the student achievement results that we helped. So, there's a four semester sequence with tier two intervention and Algebra One materials for the kids who are below grade level that we didn't.
So, in conclusion, the last thing that we wanted to share with you is that we definitely have board policy that guides this process and we have followed the board policy. We've identified the sixth graders within the last month based on their fifth grade Iowa assessment test, because that's the most recent state assessment we have and that's, which we're gonna have to go into our board policies everywhere, it says Iowa assessments, we're gonna have to update that next year. But we took their fifth grade Iowa assessment test, we also, and we looked for the kids that were in the ninetieth percentile, just like board policy says, these are St. Francis and Lenahan kids. And we then administered the Iowa Algebra Readiness Assessment, the IARA, which is a, a strong predictor of success in Algebra One. And for kids that were in the eighty-fifth percentile or higher as sixth graders on that, those are the students are getting recommended for the single acceleration for seventh grade. So, these kids will be in a fast math class, they'll be in a class that's taking two years of curriculum at one time. And those parents were notified by a mail, a letter was sent out to them over the weekend. The testing all just wrapped up, as you can imagine, last week. And there's gonna be a meeting, I believe, Wednesday night at the middle school at five for any parents that have questions who are incoming Miller kid, Miller parents, either from St. Francis or Lenahan. And these would be parents whose children did meet the criteria, meaning they had the ninetieth percentile on the state assessment and the eighty-fifth on the Algebra aptitude. At the same time, they're also gonna talk at that meeting about the English Language Arts too, because we've also, they're, I don't know if they were put in place simultaneously six or seven years ago, but we also allow students here to take ninth grade English as eighth graders. And in doing so, in seventh grade, they should have been taking seventh and eighth grade standards compacted, so it should have been a much more rigorous course and that didn't really happen. So, we've done a similar process, followed board policy, looked at those kids' Iowa assessment scores at the ninetieth percentile, used their A reading test as the second measure and came, and then came up with the list of kids who will be in the honors seventh grade ELA class, which will help them when they move to eighth grade, take the ninth grade English. So, that is not in the slide. Well, yes, it's right there in the slides, but I wanted you to know too, that the parents that were notified of this are parents who maybe are impacted because their child is accelerated in math or English or both, just depends on your child. And then I know there's a lot of conversation about wanting to differentiate us from other school districts and, and I believe that we did some due diligence here, calling and bothering other school districts around us to ask about what they're currently offering and what kids can do in math and English art, English Language Arts, because we wouldn't want our offerings to be more restrictive than what they could leave Marshalltown and go get somewhere else. And it was, I was actually surprised to see how much more our kids can do in terms of acceleration at seventh grade, eighth grade, ninth grade, and then of course, the plethora of opportunities they have for community college right here at the high school, not having to drive, of course, to, to, to get their dual credits, so.
Questions from the team?
John, did you wanna add anything?
No. That's my slide, that's okay.
John, please tell us about this slide.
You know, one of the dangers that I've observed in at least two other districts with acceleration, especially hyper-acceleration, is that, you know, on the one hand, you're trying to do your best to meet the kids' needs where they're at at a certain point in time, but there just seems to be this phenomenon that once these kids, even many of them that are advanced, hit that third credit by their sophomore year in high school, they, many of them just continue taking it, which is really a disadvantage when they take the ACT or the SAT, because if math isn't fresh in their minds, they tend to oftentimes not perform to their capabilities with that. So, I think, you know, that's a balancing act as well, because we absolutely want to meet kids' needs, but we want to do it in a responsible way that hopefully is gonna keep them at least in their junior year taking math, if not beyond. I see that, or I've seen that particularly with research I did on boys and girls, because oftentimes, girls are really proficient and or advanced in math, but they don't feel like they are for some reason, they don't perceive it as being something that comes easy or that they're good at, even though they may be a straight A student. And so, I think that's something that, you know, we need to keep in mind as well, is, you know, not providing an opportunity to do something that ultimately could change their trajectory for college for sure, or the colleges of choice that they want to go to.
And I think just coming off the heels of graduation, I was sitting yesterday thinking on the stage when a couple of those kids stood up and they'd earned their AA degree while here, which is just like so awesome. And I'm sure that started for those kids by getting three credits when they were at Miller. And so, I just wanted everyone to be clear, we're not taking that away from people, we're just asking that you hold on that process of accruing credits till you're an eighth grader and not when you're twelve, when you're a seventh grader. So, come in and take that compacted honors class as a seventh grader in English Language Arts and take it in math and then we'll know and you'll know if you're ready to do this as an eighth grader. And I'm sure there'll be questions from parents about that too, is this gonna slow down their child? And we don't envision that at all. Oddly enough, applying the, applying the board policy exactly as written, ended up with basically the same number of students being identified out of this year's sixth grade as what we already had for honors, what we've been putting kids in in seventh grade in the last couple of years.
This acceleration thing where taking math classes beyond what the ACT is testing you at is a real deal, because by the time these kids are taking the ACT, they've forgotten everything that's on the ACT. And, you know, for those college bound, bound kids, that's really the, the real big deal. I mean, because that's the difference between getting scholarship money and not getting scholarship money oftentimes. My daughter ended up having to take the ACT three times, get a school report on it because of math, so.
To review?
Reviewing.
To review the algebra and the geometry.
Yeah, if you're accelerating yourself, then you should be taking the ACT at fourteen, right? When you're, when it's perfectly timed with your Algebra Two and, and everything else. So, I guess that's another thing to consider too.
I think generally the earliest kids take it probably is if they're in the XLP, as sophomores maybe.
Yeah. Other questions?
Hi, she's gonna say, it's really nice to see how you worked through this, 'cause I always really felt like the. Because I always really felt like our school district has a really strong foundation program, and one of the best, having had two kids go through engineering. It was really fantastic. So, I'm really pleased to see this, because I really had concerns about the acceleration that was happening so early. Because that foundation doesn't get set, you know, and it really needs to work.
The team, this teacher team of professionals talked about, kids can learn algorithms, bright kids can, everyone can learn math algorithms. I mean, that's something that you can just be taught with repetition. But when you get into Algebra and Geometry in particular, you have to shift from memorizing algorithms to being able to problem solve. And where's the appropriate developmental reasoning level for a person to shift from applying algorithms to being able to do the level of reasoning? And, I mean, these were the kinds of conversations that teachers, these teacher teams have been, you know.
And we haven't been offering Algebra for seventh graders for a very long time at all. So, I mean, that's recently, last time, because I've been doing this for 33 years still.
Yeah, that's new, it's a new thing.
It's a new thing, so it's like, mm. So if we just do just the same, which we've been doing 20 some years, but that's pretty good. Still acceleration, acceleration, but not over accelerated kid, I think that's.
We have had some unique circumstances oftentimes with kids moving in and that sort of thing, where, I know that Jackie and Pat have worked together with the teachers to figure out how we can make certain things happen, how we can get students from Miller to a high school, or a high school to Miller, to make that happen. So I'm confident we'll continue to do that in those special circumstances.
And you always will have those.
Thanks for this, it'd be a lot of thanks to me. I hadn't received parent questions on it. Is there any communication going out generally, or?
Well, the handbook and then the letter that went out this weekend. So maybe there's, maybe it just hasn't.
And that was in the, not this, the list was in the.
Yes.
Of all the.
Was there really three paths?
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
And at the parent meeting, and we're going to have the parents actually fill out what is in board policy, which is if you want your child to content area accelerate one grade, you need to fill out a one sheet, a piece of paper, which acknowledges what your choice you're making with your child and how it could impact their grade point average and other things. So I think this is gonna get us back on the right path of doing what our policy says.
Thank you. Are you trying to leave the table?
Uh, I didn't want to, but I can't.
Okay, next item is for approval, I'm sorry, for Woodbury. Yeah, not information only, that was last, two weeks ago. So, tonight we'd like your approval to spend curriculum funds to buy the literacy curriculum for the K-4 Woodbury students, the dual language students, which includes Spanish and English versions of reading, into reading and Arriba la lectura. And then on the board docs, you saw the split out of what ESL is covering out of that and what the curriculum budget's covering. Because the, you know, the ESL instruction for dual language kids comes through the classroom literacy instruction.
Questions for the team?
Did you wanna add anything in all of that?
How long has it been?
It's been 17 years.
17 years?
May I have a motion to approve the curriculum as presented?
Same.
Carter Fletcher, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. The motion carries five zero. Now, are you the same person that didn't wanna come to the table?
Yes.
Mr. Grunsinger. Lisa has the seat warmed for you.
Thank you.
No, if you said it.
I'm running a fever.
Remember now to talk with that microphone. Great, thanks.
Okey dokey.
So I think the first thing we have is our Positive Action Guidance Curriculum. Last board meeting, I presented what that curriculum was, talked a little bit about the process we'd gone through to select it, and the council had spent almost a two-year process in looking at, what was the research, the professional standards, what are the needs for our kids, where are we currently at in meeting those needs? And so, tonight I'm asking for you to approve expenditure of $50,000 coming out of the AT-Risk Funds to purchase K-12 Guidance Curriculum, Positive Action.
Questions for Mr. Gruns? May I have a motion to approve the Positive Action Guidance Curriculum as presented?
Same.
Edmund Fletcher, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. The motion carries five zero.
Thank you. I'm also here to give you an update on our social emotional learning work. It's been almost exactly a year since we've talked about this.
Almost exactly?
Almost exactly, three days on. So, one thing, sometimes I become a little worried here, because I'm very passionate about this, so please prompt me to keep moving if you need me to. So last year, when we talked about this, when we discussed what was driving our renewed focus, there was a thought exchange survey that the district had done, getting information from community stakeholders about what are their priorities, what are the areas that they would love to see enhanced in our district. Behavior was one of those areas that came to the top. We had also been doing the book study about teaching with poverty in mind, through Eric Jensen. We had the survey information from, not what we talked about last board meeting, but two years ago, still the review at that time. And then we had office referral information to talk about, how many kids are going to the office for inappropriate behaviors? How often are they going? Are we have repeat offenders? So as we were looking at all this information, we thought we probably need to do some things differently. We also talked about moving this work forward, we need to put some things in place. And the first one was to do a district-wide steering committee. So from across the district, every building has a representative, and they share where they think we need to spend our time based on information, learning, and data. We needed to increase our partnership with the AEA, and we developed a five-phase implementation plan on how are we going to improve our practices. We also needed to improve some of our community partnerships. We had a really good board of associates, but some of these other agencies, like the Arctic Community Wellness Center, Gracie May, Life Connections, we weren't as familiar with. And we needed to make sure that we were surveying all of our staff to see what their beliefs are and their understanding about social emotional development to drive some of our professional learning. We also talked about collaborative problem solving. Dr. Stuart Ablon was the person who drives that work, and how are we using this information to think differently about supporting kids? So that's all the stuff we covered a year ago. A little update on mental health and make sure we're current in our research and our thinking. So, NAMI is the National Alliance on Mental Healthness, and they're one of the largest supportive groups on children and mental, mental health. One in five youth have or will have signs of mental health disorders. Typically, the delay between when we start to see some of those symptoms of mental health issues and it becomes noticeable enough that there's actually intervention applied, is about eight to 10 years. And approximately 50% of kids that are old, 14 or older, they'll drop out of school if their mental health or behavioral needs aren't met along the way. So when you think about behavior, there's really two different ways to view it. When you hear about kids misbehaving, when you hear about some of the videos, you know, Channel 13 did a news story recently about disruptive kids in classrooms, what they really talk about is what we call externalizing behaviors. Those are the things that we see, we hear, we experience, we feel. But it's just a small part of everything going on with our kids. Below that, we have internalizing behaviors, and those aren't as easy to see. That's all the anxiety, the fear, the stressors, everything that builds up on the inside. And many times, those internalizing behaviors tend to be far greater than what we see on the outside. And over time, they build up to a behavior that explodes. So, through research, whether you're thinking about CASL, which is the national organization that supports schools' development on social emotional learning, you're thinking about NAMI, if you're thinking about Harvard University and some of those other professional organizations, they have the same framework for all professional learning around this area. And it begins with, what do we do for all kids? In Marshalltown, that would mean that we would teach them what's expected in all areas of school. So what do we expect you to do in the classroom? What do we expect you to do in the lunchroom? How do we expect to act in the hallway? How do you engage with other kids in an appropriate way? We also need to acknowledge and reinforce those who are doing it. Especially our younger kids, having that positive interaction, that positive relationship is really the biggest thing for them. So we need to acknowledge them when we catch them doing what they're supposed to do and doing it in a way that they'll respond to. And it's as simple as, great job, I love what you're doing, high five, I really enjoy what I'm seeing here. And then we need to continue to build their skills. Because the presumption that they're coming from home with those skills is a false one. So that's why we would use the Positive Action Curriculum to do that. We also need to be proactive in trying to identify kids who have needs, especially in those internalizing behaviors. And so, universal screening is what they promote. Because for years, schools wait until something happens and then we respond. But we need to get on the front side of that and figure out if a student have a need, so they don't get to the part where they explode and have those aggressive behaviors. So we have, in Marshalltown, Sabers, which we've talked about before, it's a universal screening tool that looks at some of those at-risk behaviors in the internalizing fields, the externalizing fields, and also those active enablers. Attention problems, the ability to stay focused, all the things I struggle with on a day-to-day basis. I'm trying to. Dr. Stuart is doing his best. Once we have information about, you know, kids who potentially have needs, what do we do? Well, we need to teach them differently. And so for Marshalltown, we need to work more frequently with them. We need to approach them through a model. We've adopted the collaborative problem solving model on how do we teach them to identify their behaviors? How do we teach them to recognize when things aren't going okay before they get to the point where they have that really negative interaction? And how do we use intervention materials that Positive Action gives us? There are some kids who have really severe behavior. They tend to be unsafe, and you hear about them as aggressive behaviors, physical aggression, running away from school. And those kids need really intensive instruction. And so for us, that would mean that we have design-specific individual plans on how we're gonna meet those needs. And we're gonna continue to use collaborative problem solving. There's some research-based curriculums listed there that we're gonna train our staff in to be able to use. And then the last thing that they talk about within their framework is you have to do this in a partnership, you can't do this in isolation. So how do we work together with our outside organizations and agencies so that we're collaborating and trying to do the same thing together? So how did we spend our first year focusing on this work? First thing we did is we developed a steering committee. And the steering committee set these five areas of focus for goals for the year. We wanted to provide all of our staff members, our teachers, our parent educators, about the research about brain development. Over the years, there's been a lot of progress on actually doing brain mapping and trying to figure out what causes the decay in brains, what delays the normal reaction that we would expect to see. We also wanted our folks to understand that kids do well if they can, and adopt that mindset. That when misbehavior happens, it's not about kids not wanting to do well, it's that they don't know how to respond in the situation. And that could be because of an internalizing behavior, an externalizing behavior, mental health issues, there's a variety of things that get in the way. We have staff who are trained in the first level of collaborative problem solving, and we wanted them to role model what it's like, including all the verbiage. We wanted to teach all of our staff the five categories of thinking skills that focuses on, these are areas that we need to teach in order to ensure that our kids have appropriate behaviors in school and are well-prepared for life outside of school. And we wanted to teach them about the relationship between what we call challenging behaviors, problems to be solved, and lacking skills. And the focus here is, most of the time, we focus on the behaviors we don't like. You know, if a student pushes over a chair, we don't like that. We're gonna call them out on that and try to teach them not to push over that chair. That's actually the wrong place to spend our time and attention. There's something that caused them to have that reaction. We need to figure out what that is and spend our time teaching them to deal with that better, so they don't get to the point where they wanna push over a chair. And then we wanted to be very intentional about professional learning. It's one thing to spend time talking about things and sharing information across the district, but we also wanted people to model that. So we made a plan to have people in every building who could model collaborative problem solving in some of these structures while we spent time learning about it as an entire staff. So over the course of this year, we had eight total hours to spend on this learning as a district. And across this time, I'm just gonna do a brief timeline of how we spent months. In September, we introduced the research to all of our staff members. We started refocusing on common vocabulary, helped them understand the case for why we need professional learning on social emotional development. Introduced Dr. Ablon, his approach, and then he came in and actually did a keynote for us, as well as an evening event for parents, and whether outside agencies they all enjoy. In November, we went back to that universal instruction and how are we going to teach all of our kids those common expectations? We also focused there on using the universal screening tool Sabers. And the emphasis we put at this point was, for years, when you hear things like PBIS, Positive Behavior Intervention Supports, people think it's a reward system where we give kids things for doing, you know, behaviors they want to. We started talking about moving away from those reward systems, because for most kids, that's not necessary. The kids who respond well to that are the ones who don't need rewards anyway. So how do we give them those positive relationships, those positive acknowledgements, which is really the things that they wanna work for? In February, we moved on to talk about, how do you take this information from our universal screening and our Sabers? How do you look at all this other information we have? And how do you make a plan on working with kids? We have so much information in this district about our kids that sometimes it becomes overwhelming on how to organize it and do something meaningful with it. So we gave them some structures and some materials put together on how to do that and gave them time to practice with that. In March, we gave them more practice time. We developed case studies that gave them a comprehensive situation about students, involved a lot of information about not only what happens in school, but what happens outside of school. And then said, work through it with the training and learning we've had this year. It was a really good experience, our staff really enjoyed it. And the other part is, we focused on these five common areas of lacking skills. When you have an area of language communication, what it means is that many of our kids aren't able to express themselves appropriately. So you see inappropriate verbiage, you see them swearing, yelling, cussing people out. Sometimes, because they know they can't get out what they want, you see an aggressive behavior. Attention and working memory, they can't focus, or it takes them a long time to think through what they wanna do and what to say. And they get frustrated, because most people move this fast, and they don't. They need 30 seconds to a minute to work through it. Emotion, self-regulation is a huge area of focus for our kids. How do you keep yourself calm? How do you keep yourself in an area where your brain is able to listen and process information appropriately? Because the second you start getting upset or worked up, all these chemicals kicking in your brain, and the ability to do that really diminishes for both the adults as well as the kids. Cognitive flexibility, how do you work with kids who are black and white thinkers? How do you help them understand that there is gray in the world and that they have to. and that they have to learn to understand other people's perspectives? And social thinking, how do you help kids understand that there's more than just them and their perspective? Perspective-taking, understanding how they interact with other people and influence other people. You know, especially some of those soft skills for employability. This is a really big area for them. Because every building was trying to apply this learning, but at their own pace, we gave them the months to review whatever they needed to anyhow. Because every time we set content aside, then I would work with each individual building to figure out what does their content look like. For next year, what we were, what we're planning to focus on is continuing to work on how do staff members and kids learn to keep themselves regulated and emotional control? How do they understand other people's perspectives? And how do they use the information in a way that both addresses the problem as well as helps build a positive relationship? Beyond this, we've done a lot of additional work in social-emotional learning this year. You've heard a lot about the guidance curriculum, Positive Action. We've also continued to train people and utilize them through the collaborative problem-solving first level of training. We've worked with our AEA partners to provide a lot of professional development. Because everything we talk about here, it's new information to our professionals. So they need training, they need time for Q and A, they need time to work through what does this look like for them. And so we've utilized our AEA for a lot of that. I've also been spending time working with our AEA partners, trying to ensure that we're working together and that we're working through a common language. So at the very beginning of the school year, we sent out a belief survey to all of our staff members. And then, as this board meeting's concluding, that survey is also closing down for a second time because we're going to do a comparison and I'll be able to give that to you soon. Another survey we sent out was on the five goal areas that that steering committee created. How do each individual feel that we did on meeting those areas? And so you have some information here about, from their responses, how much did they agree, a slightly agree, slightly disagree, or strongly disagree we met that need for them? Ninety-six percent either agreed, slightly agreed or strongly agreed that we met the first goal for them. Ninety-four point five percent felt that we met that goal for them as well. In our third area, just under eighty percent felt that we met that for them. So that's an area that we want to continue to improve on. In our fourth goal area, eighty-one percent said we met that. So that's an area where we want to continue to improve on as well, is those five skills. And lastly, in this fifth goal, ninety-three percent said we met that. So they're starting to understand that behaviors are caused by something and we need to focus on the cause of those behaviors. So this was really positive information for the steering committee as we looked to next year to develop goals about what does year two look like. The other part of information we have up here is, there are times when safety is an issue and so we have to unfortunately physically manage students in a restraint, use a exclusionary timeout. These are usually for safety concerns or when we have a really young or unsafe kid running off campus and we don't feel that they're going to be safe out in the streets or out in the community. What I want to show here is that as we've worked through this professional learning, if you look at the very bottom column, this says "total." The more time we spend into professional learning, you saw a significant drop in the need to utilize those strategies with kids across our schools. The other thing I'd like to highlight is if you look third from the bottom, where our Four Oaks program is. Now, this is a program that works with our most challenging kids and most of them have pretty severe mental health issues. If you think about having eighteen students there with your most intensive behaviors and how rarely they actually have to use physical management to support those kids, that's truly impressive. Because for most of those kids, they used to have one or two incidents a day in their schools. So I wouldn't be surprised to see that number five times as much if they were in one of our comprehensive buildings. So that's really supportive data for the team, knowing that our work is starting to make a difference. We're starting to communicate with kids and they're responding in ways that aren't unsafe. So where we go from here is that our steering committee is working to develop goals for next year. We're starting to look at the data I just shared with you and we really want to get the belief survey in from us as well that we just completed. Collaborative problem-solving is an important part of our work. So we're continuing to grow the number of people that are trained in that first level skill. We also want to continue to offer professional development to folks on some goals this year, including that mindset of, it's a skill problem, not a will problem. And adding into it this year, I'll be overseeing the professional development of all of our parent educators to make sure that they're getting a common message in this area. With the purchase of Canvas, all the learning that we did this year is going to be going online. I'll be spending my summer developing it and putting courses online so that our teachers can access it at any time. Because we do have onboarding through new employees and people want refreshers in it. And then we were lucky enough to be able to create a partnership to bring capturing kids' hearts to our secondary schools, which is a really great... It teaches a lot of great strategies on how do secondary people in really little time create really good relationships with kids? How do you have those positive interactions in the small amount of time you have them? How do you build relationships and get to go them? Not only did we think this is good work, but many people from across the state have thought the same. We've had sixteen school districts and five AEA's come spend time learning about this work from us. Recently, we were invited and presented at a local symposium called the Resiliency in Trauma and Form Care Symposium, where both school districts and mental health professionals from across the state attended. There was about three hundred and seventy-five people there who wanted to hear about this work that we're doing. So it was a really great experience for us to be part of that.
Questions for Mr. Sprager?
Something big changed at Hockland, didn't it? And that's the real driver of your change in your numbers?
Yeah, at Hockland, we were lucky that we figured out some of those drivers for some of those kids that were having ongoing incidents. And once we figured those out and how to interact with them in a way where they didn't get to that point of being upset, we made a big change.
So does this still fall under PBIS, or is that completely...?
So PBIS is a part of this. Social-emotional learning is the large framework that we're putting everything on.
Yeah, that was confusing, I wasn't sure if it was replaced by it or...
No, we still need to teach all of our kids expectations. We still need to acknowledge those, which are the hallmarks of PBIS. We're moving away from that reward system though because we want to move into more of those positive interactions.
Other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Ben? We finally got there, you've been waiting so patiently. Little chair is warm.
Okay. Mike, I brought my calculator just in case you have any tough math questions.
Why are you calling me out? It's Ben's always asking the tough math questions. It's not me.
Um, anyway, looking forward to the 2020 school year. We have some expenses that we're anticipating for next year, which include labor increases for our staff and also the addition of insurance expenses for food service. Staff will be new this year. We also estimate food prices to increase by roughly two percent each year. So with those expenses in mind, I am recommending that we increase the meal prices for next year by ten cents at lunch and ten cents at breakfast. And that would bring us to a dollar seventy per meal at breakfast for our non-CEP schools, and two sixty-five at lunch for our non-CEP schools. And then to be compliant with the USDA guidelines, we'll also raise adult lunch prices to three dollars and seventy-five cents for lunch.
Questions for Glenn or her calculator? May I have a motion to approve the meal price increases presented for the 2019-2020 school year?
Same.
Fletcher Miller, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same. The motion carries, five zero.
Thank you very much.
All right. I have our first tenant of agreement. We're going tonight. We were forthcoming at the next board meeting. B, do you want me to read through this, or do you just want to summarize?
Summarize.
Okay, well, um... Maybe I'll just talk about this. Most important is the wages at the top. So the paras will advance on steps this year. We did not add any money to the steps or figure for this. And so that's equivalent to a two-point-five, two-point-eight-five package increase, which, within the package, is salary, FICA, and hypers. And then we made some small changes in some job classifications and moved a few things to different pay lanes.
So did we not have a study hall monitor?
We have had them, yes, as gen and paras. And those positions, for the most part, went unfilled for the school year. Now with the move over to the new lane that they'll be in, I've already had transport buses related to make sure they're still... Seems to have the intended effect.
Other questions for you?
Just doesn't really talk about the addition of insurance for a lot of this group of employees that they never had the option.
Right, right.
So that's on top of all everything that we're talking about. Just saying that, just so who knows what it is.
Any other questions, comments? May I have a motion to approve the agreement for par- professionals as presented for the 2019-2020 school year?
Same.
Carter Miller, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same. The Marshall County...
We'll have four more for you in two weeks.
We hope you will too.
Because you don't get to leave until it's done.
Mr. Springer? Pop right up here.
There will be no...
The point that you were doing is bumping down.
I have a few things to talk about tonight. The first one is going to be the change order to the Phase Two construction. We have, we have been through many meetings, many negotiations with the Ball Team, with FEH and the district. And the recommendation forthcoming through FEH in conjunction with agreements that they've made with Ball Team and Dr. Shute and I speaking at length with these people is that they're recommending a change order to the contract of thirty-one thousand five hundred sixteen dollars, which would take the total contract sum with this change order to six million seven hundred sixty-three thousand five hundred twenty-two dollars.
And then our last negotiation session with them, we, these were change orders that we all entered for some agreement with, were important.
We're still negotiating on the...
Yeah, we have, I think, four additional...
We have four additional that we're negotiating on. And I don't have those right in front of me or what those, what those totals are.
Our intent with those would be to bring those to both facilities and finance prior to whatever we recommended.
This is the meeting on the twelfth that you asked us about?
Yeah, and that should bring closure to that meeting.
Other questions? May I have a motion to approve the change order for Brown House Phase Two project as presented?
Same.
Carter Miller, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same. The motion carries, five zero.
Then we got a solid there today. The next...
As good as written on Friday, too.
Awesome. The next item on the agenda is for our Kaboom Playground that we have a grant for that's going to be installed on the nineteenth of July. And it is kind of a dist-, not kind of, it is a district practice that all our new playgrounds, we are putting a rubberized surface under, under the playgrounds, specific to fall nights, specific to the utilization, the ages and utilization of the playgrounds. We sought some bids. And the last surface that we put in was a poured-in-place rubber surface that we put in over at Hanson Elementary. And the children really like it. It's a little bit more economical than tile. But we solicited bids from a couple of companies. And the low bid that we got for the poured-in-place is from a company called EcoTurf. It's an EcoTurf surfacing. The company is Taylor Made out of Kansas City. And the bid came in at thirty thousand five hundred seventy-six dollars.
Questions for Mr. Springer? I have a motion to approve the bid from Taylor Made Company in the amount of thirty thousand five hundred seventy-six dollars as presented.
Same.
Same.
Fletcher Carter, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same. The motion carries, five zero.
Our, our expectation of that will be for that to be poured, whether permitting immediately following the build day on the Friday, the nineteenth of July. So hopefully, by no later than Monday or Tuesday.
Senator Carter?
The last thing I wanted to talk about are our 2019 summer P and G projects. They're all listed here by school. This is after discussion with the principals, discussion with some of the players at the schools, the custodial staff, the maintenance staff, going through our work order system and taking a look at issues that have come up throughout the course of the school year and things that are on our radar that we would like to get taken care of over the summer. Some of these, some of these would be pretty immediate. Some of these would be, would take a little bit more time. These do not include anything that would come out of other funding like, or save.
Do these things, Chuck, would you find, if I went back to that, would we make huge spreadsheets like this? Really small font, remember we sat downstairs and went through that thing like detail? Would we find some of, at least some of these things in that spreadsheet, or is this different?
We would find some of these things in that spreadsheet. There would be something, the Franklin HVAC, roofing replacements. You would see some of these things in there.
Other questions? Other questions?
Are we constrained more by budget, by manpower, or time? How much do we take on?
Budget? I had a specific budget that I had to work within. The total for all of these projects was three hundred eighty-five thousand four hundred fifty-three dollars. Excuse me?
Are you sure? Other questions? Thank you, sir.
So we're hopeful that at the next meeting between Josh and Chuck, that we'll be coming for at least a proposal to go out for RFP on using saved dollars to enhance security throughout the district, which also is part of the long-range facilities plan. And then there also will be, I'm sure, a Pearl request for some playground improvements and all of this.
We have policies.
The first policy, seven, ten, five, is... Bosses, we're frustrating to recommend deleting that policy, so that's going back, I would recommend deleting it. Waiting in the second.
May I have a motion to do that? Franklin Miller, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose, the same. Motion carries, five to zero.
Then, the next policy, seven, eleven point one, R1, student eligibility for bus service. We simply deleted the last sentence in this policy, contradicted the discussion fee per ride by saying that the people that would be eligible to not have to pay the fee, those are those that actually live within the, or outside of the state guidelines as it relates to qualifying for free transportation. So I would recommend approving this as amended, but waiting in a second.
Motion?
Second.
Carter?
Second.
Franklin? To amend and waive the second reading, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose, the same. Motion carries, five to zero.
As far as initial reviews, the first policy, five oh two point one three, student name changes would be a new policy. This was developed in collaboration with Chris Wurzberger, our district attorney, as it relates to the steps that need to be taken to request a student name change. On occasions, we'll have students that will make such requests on their own accord in a formalized process for which that could take place, that is within the scope of the law. And so that's what this accomplishes. So we actually have the policy, which is five oh two point one three, and we also have the application for consideration, which is five oh two point one three E one.
Any questions on these at this time? Those we'll both return. Moving on to student conduct on school transportation, the only change in that is to change to whom discipline issues are reported. Would you like that to come back, or would you like to mark it as reviewed?
Be reviewed tomorrow afternoon.
Mark as reviewed. Seven eleven point two. Seven eleven point three has gone to Rex for additional changes. He has made some. Any questions from anyone regarding those changes? It'll come back.
And the changes that have been made to that policy as well as the next one on summer school, or incorporating I S B language for the most part.
So they will both need to come back. Is there any question or comment on those at this time? Any communications of note?
So this wrestling magazine is a national wrestling magazine that goes out to over twenty thousand people and wrestling coaches throughout the nation, and Roundhouse Phase Two was featured in it this month. So they did a story about Allen Morrison and in the wrestling room, and how it's, the writer calls it the best wrestling facility he's seen in high school ever. So it's pretty cool.
Remember that when it comes back for Chain of George.
So yeah, it was a nice little piece, and it showed there and today. Our old retired coach, Phil Henning, got in touch with this writer, and so gave him a tour of the Roundhouse, and Mike Mann was there as well. So it was a pretty cool publicity for us.
Yeah, we'll, we'll see if we can secure copies for all...
Yeah, if not, we can copy this, just kind of send it out, make copies, but yeah, we'll make sure you get to see it, so it's a pretty cool story, so.
Looking at reminders, our next event together is a board work session on the tenth and eleventh regarding the data information from building principals. The finance committee will meet, our next meeting is June seventeenth. Sean has a few transportation order policies. Committee reports, anybody on SIAC, Ben, Lisa?
Yes, I have one for the, I suppose, the third final time for the year. Continuing the work that had been ongoing throughout the year, well, sounds like continuing to be next year focused on... Yeah, identifying skills that the district expects students to have in that life readiness category, the bar camp ready. Focus a lot on, I guess, I'm, learning to learn, agility, those kinds of things. Student interest in work, but it's still a process.
TQ, Mike or Lisa?
Yes, we had TQ on the twenty-eighth, and reviewed our budget to date for the school year, and then presented some professional development requests for next school year that we wanted the committee to say, okay. That was basically the focus of our meeting.
What have we done tonight to improve education for the students in the district?
Couple of new curriculums. Would Mary's got the first going seventeen years for language?
I guess language hasn't changed for a second.
And then also on guidance, I enjoyed the update, or appreciated the information on the math curriculum. I had conversations, it was tough to understand, I really made it clear.
I think I said the last time we presented with the digital learning plan, this is a great idea, and I think it'll continue to evolve and be a great support system for across the board, teachers, students. I was focusing on parents.
It was great to get data on students and staff through clarity and the information that Matt presented on social emotional learning. It's nice to have a technology plan ready to roll.
Well, it kind of goes toward the idea, once again, it's one thing to have access, access to the devices, it's another to use them. Helps stage, as David would do, to figure out what more we need to do to help support potential students.
Having been at yesterday's graduation, I was inspired by Albert Einstein's quote. And he says, "Learn from yesterday, live for today, and hope for tomorrow." We had three hundred-plus students show us the hope for tomorrow as they walked across the stage. If you haven't been to one, should go to a graduation. We'll even let your hand out if you want. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Miller Fletcher, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same. Motion carries, five to zero. We're going to examine section when you de-water and water.